This regular meeting of the Daily City Council this Monday, February 27th. Let me ask that if we could all please rise to start the meeting by saying a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with everyty, and justice for all.
Okay, so let me just make a general announcement to watch the city council meeting. You can go on YouTube slash Daily City Video Meetings or you can go to our website at And when it comes to public participation, there are two ways to submit public comment. One is to submit written comments by the meeting day and second to attend the meeting in person. All right, let me go to a roll call, please. Can we get a roll call, please, Madam City Clerk?
Ms. De Chivani?
Present.
Dr. Roth?
Here.
Ms. Manalo?
Present.
Mr. Sylvester?
Lance Sylvester, present.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Present. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Let me go on to presentations. First presentation is a commendation regarding the San Mateo County poet laureate Jorge Argüeta. And here to present, Mr. Argüeta is our Vice Mayor, Justin Manal. Take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening, we have the honor for a commendation for San Mateo County poet laureate Jorge Argüeta. Whereas Jorge Argüeta is a Salvadorian, award-winning poet and author of many highly acclaimed bilingual children's books and short stories, covering themes related to Latino culture and traditions, nature and the immigrant experience. And whereas Jorge grew up in Santo Domingo de Guzmán, El Salvador, luring stories of his indigenous heritage and their belief in human-nature connection, instilling in him great respect for all environment and appreciation for oral tradition. And whereas Jorge has written numerous children's books, short stories, as well as poems, that have been included in textbooks and anthologies, and whereas his children's books are written in poetry form in two languages, English and Spanish, and reflect the Latino experience and heritage, he also writes about the Nautl Indians and their deep appreciation and respect for nature. And whereas Jorge's adult poems cover themes of hardships of growing up in El Salvador during wartime and the difficulties experienced by immigrants in the United States. And whereas Jorge has spent over 15 years as a workshop and classroom presenter, speaking about the power of poetry on children's lives and has won multiple awards for his literature. And whereas on December 13th, 2022, the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors appointed Jorge Argüeta of Daily City as the county's poet laureate for a two-year term, citing his ability to use poetry to create bridges among diverse communities and recently had an inaugural event at the John Daly Library in Daly City to celebrate his appointment. Now, our mayor, Ray Buena Ventura, and the members of the city council do hereby commend Jorge Argüeta on all of his outstanding achievements and becoming the new poet laureate in San Mateo County and extend sincere congratulations, best wishes, and all of your future endeavors. Congratulations, our San Mateo County poet laureate Jorge Argüeta.
Buenas noches. Good evening. Mr. Mayor, the audience of Daily City, city councils. I am nothing but humble, you know, to be a servant of poetry, especially for the San Mateo County, for this beautiful, amazing city of Daily City, where I have lived for the past 15 years, you know. I've been in the United States for almost 45 years. And I'm happy and I'm honored to be the poet laureate and to serve this term of two years to try to enhance the beauty of this amazing city with other cities, with other poets, with other communities, because I believe that poetry is what poetry does, join communities, you know, join our hearts, minds, and spirits, you know, that's what the spirit of poetry does. So, thank you very much for this commendation. Muchísimas gracias, you know, thank you. God bless you all. In our Indian language, we say, "Neto tengu, inimets paluia, paltesu panutaka", which means, "May God take you in His hands, so nothing can happen to you." Have a great evening, everybody.
Okay, thank you again, Mr. Argüeta and Madam Vice Mayor. Let's move on to presentation number two, which is the presentation by Placeworks.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I'm sorry.
May we say something?
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry about that.
That's all right, go ahead.
Okay. Bienvenidos. Felicidades, mijo. And I just want to say that when you brought in the culture at the library, you brought in what I like about, there's so many things, attributes about you. You brought your own poetry, but you share with others. And that I noticed, that you didn't take, you were humble, you're so humble, you stood back and you let the native tribe speak for themselves. When you had your friends that were from Puebla, which I know that area pretty well, and then you had another friend. It's a community, and you're a part of that community, and that was a beautiful, beautiful, because you took the indigenous, you integrated it, and you made it so that everyone was included. And that didn't go unnoticed. I thought that was a beautiful, beautiful moment. And I know that we had former Recreation Commissioner sitting beside you, Nadia Flamenco, attending, Teresa Faboa, and Nancy Rodriguez, who's not here, and Victoria was there, and Chela, and so many people. Chloe was there, our own Daily City poet, and it was to celebrate you. And it speaks for yourself by you doing that. So we look forward to many more times for you being here, and very proud you're from Daily City. And I know you're going to go out in the world and keep spreading the love, the kindness, and what? Zoom. So gracias, muchas gracias. Thank you, Mayor.
Dr. Wright?
Yeah, Mr. Argüeta, thank you for sharing your art. As a person that kind of dabbles in poetry myself, I think the work that we do as poets, as artists, it's related to healing. And you combining indigenous backgrounds, that, we know that culture is medicine, and with all the different traumas that our peoples have gone through, you're able to write stories, you're able to write narratives that are able to reclaim what was taken, but it's also a way to reconnect the indigenous and also to realize who you are through the words that we speak. So thank you for accepting this commendation and being the poet laureate. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Wright, any other comments or questions? Madam Vice Mayor?
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for gracing us this evening. It was just a beautiful event at the John Daly Library, just intergenerational. It was really beautiful and was deeply touched when, at the very end, you gave the sage to bless the home with Recreation Commissioner Cheryl Qatar at the very end of the evening. And just you being able to share the indigenous practices of your land and to the city of Daily City. Seeing all the books also that you were able to share. If you haven't been to the John Daly Public Library, please come and see all of the amazing work that our poet laureate has written. There wasn't even enough room for all of your books, as you mentioned. And so thank you for being with us, and we look forward to hearing more of your work and gracing the county, and so proud that you are a resident here in the city of Daily City. And want to acknowledge San Mateo Arts Commissioner, that's here, Victoria Magbilan, who also wanted to be here to honor you this evening. So thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Any other comments? Okay, hearing none. Thank you again, Mr. Argüeta, for coming and gracing us with your presence, and congratulations. All right, now we move on to presentations by Placeworks, which is on new commercial mixed-use for the Mission Street and Geneva Avenue.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. This is a presentation, again, as you mentioned, Mayor Buena Ventura, from Placeworks. Placeworks is a consultant that the city has hired to develop a new zoning district along Mission Street and Geneva Avenue. Sometime back, the state of California awarded the city of Daily City some grant funds under SB 2. The intention of those funds was that they be used toward projects the city could undertake, including zoning measures that increase the production of housing and affordable housing in particular. And so the idea behind the commercial mixed-use development zone was it was a concept that was developed in our general plan, land use and housing elements. And the idea was that it would generate, again, additional housing opportunities by coming with a new zoning district for these two corridors. So with that, I will turn the presentation over to Placeworks, and they will explain to you what's happening. This upcoming Thursday, we do have an initial stakeholder workshop for property owners on Mission Street and Geneva Avenue. And that's at 2:30. People who are interested in that presentation can log into the city's website and they can register themselves for the meeting. Without any further, you know, introduce Bruce Brubeck.
Thanks, Michael. Yeah, I'm Bruce Brubeck with Placeworks. I'm here with my colleague, Janet Chang, and we're happy to be here tonight, and we're happy to be working on this project for Daily City. So hopefully this mouse will just turn. So I'll go over, it's not a long presentation, but I'll go over what the objectives are, what our scope is, a couple of things about existing conditions. I want to talk about case studies, so some other projects that are happening in other cities that might relate to what could happen on Mission and Geneva, and then we'll talk about next steps. So the objectives for the project is to create a new commercial mixed-use zoning district to incentivize and streamline residential development and mixed-use development in Mission and Geneva corridors. That will improve the quality of life in those corridors, bring more vitalization to the corridors and help support business in the corridors as well. As part of that, we will adjust regulations in the corridors to overcome barriers to development. So we're looking at that now. And then we'll also include regulations that address community concerns. So this is going to have a community engagement component to it, and we'll understand community concerns, and we'll work with the community and the council to develop the regulations. Our scope is about a year long, a little longer. We are close to the start. We've done existing conditions work. That asterisk, that is after the red arrow, is a stakeholder meeting we'll be having with developers, architects, property owners, that's coming up this week, as Michael mentioned. And then we'll have a community workshop in April. We will work on some draft recommendations in April and May and come back to the council and make another presentation to you then. And then eventually work our way through the project to get to the zoning amendments. And that is intended to be late this year. Okay. So the boundary is basically all parcels along Mission Street and Geneva Avenue in the city boundary of Daily City. Geneva's on the left, Mission is on the right, both of these north is up. And this slide shows the general plan land use designations for the corridor. So the general plan already envisions this mixed-use regulation to be on these corridors. There's already a CMU designation in the general plan that has been there since the general plan, the most recent general plan has been adopted. With the exception of a couple of parcels, you can see different colors. For instance, there's a pink color at the south end of Mission, which is neighborhood, commercial. We'll be looking at that parcel as well, but that's within the specific plan area, the BART specific plan. And there's a couple of other parcels with different designations on them. You can see on Geneva, there's some residential parcels as well. So we'll be looking at all those. The zoning, however, does not align with the general plan land use. So the zoning has not been brought up to date with the general plan. The general plan oversees the zoning, and the zoning needs to be made compatible with the general plan. So that's something that this project will do. You can see that the zoning in this area is light commercial, which is that pink color, and that is, light commercial does not allow for residential uses. So the zoning doesn't allow for residential, but the general plan does. So there's inconsistency there, and we're going to address that. And then there's other regulations that the zoning has that is not necessarily conducive to development. Another example is the minimum required lot size. So we'll be looking at all those zoning regulations and then coming back to you with the zoning amendment. So I wanted to talk about parcel ownership, because we've done some analysis of the parcels in this area on both corridors. And we looked at parcels that are next to each other that have the same owner. So individual parcels with the same owner next to each other, which could indicate that they've been assembled by someone who might be interested in doing development. Doesn't have to be, it might just be that somebody decided to buy the parcel next to them and don't have plans for development, but it can often indicate that development could be coming. So we wanted to look at that, and all these different colors on the map shows where there's contiguous parcels owned by the same owner. So it indicates to us that there is a lot that could happen on this corridor, particularly on Mission. And so we'll, now, we are inviting all the property owners on both corridors to these stakeholder meetings. And so we're having that first one on Thursday, and we'll find out more. But our analysis showed that for those assembled parcels, they really range in size. Geneva has just generally smaller parcels, and the assembled parcels, there's fewer of them, but they range from .1 acres roughly to .6 acres, so both less than an acre. And then on Mission Street, they range in size from a third of an acre up to two and a half acres. So, which, it'll be easier to develop parcels that are larger. So that gives you a sense of potential. I want to talk about a couple, let me make sure I didn't, this is very sensitive, so I want to make sure I don't, yeah, so transit. We have a consultant on board, W Trans, to look at transportation with us as we're looking at this corridor. And on Mission Street, well, I'll say that both Mission and Geneva are considered high-quality transit corridors. So these are good locations for new housing, because they are very accessible to high-quality transit. And high-quality transit means, in this case, either bus routes or fixed rail, bus routes that have less than 20-minute headways, and you have that on both these streets, and also proximity to the BART station. And so in Mission, on the Mission corridor, you have the BART station less than a half mile to both Daily City and the Colma BART. In Geneva's case, you again have buses with pretty good headways, and you also have the Bay Shore Caltrain Station about a mile away. So both of these corridors are considered to be high-quality, which means that they could qualify for incentives from the state for new housing. Let's see. In terms of bikeways, I think I missed one, Mission. There's no bicycle facilities on Mission that are currently provided. There is a proposal to provide Class 3, which is shared bikes and cars together in the same lane. And, but that's not implemented yet. There are good east-west connections on several streets. There's also a parallel route that's not so far away on Hillside. And then Geneva has Class 2 bike lanes on it currently, and there is a small gap in that facility. And then there's also the cross streets that link up that do have some bike facilities as well in Geneva. I would say that bike facilities are not great in this area. It's a busy street, it's a high-risk street for bike riders, especially inexperienced bike riders. So that could be better. Transit is good, but bikes are challenging. And then I think we have a slide on pedestrian facilities, which is okay, there's good, there's continuous sidewalks on both corridors. The sidewalks are narrow in places, and if you really want, you know, vibrant streets and good, you know, activity, wider sidewalks are better, and Mission varies from 7 to 15. 15 is a pretty good width for a pedestrian-friendly street. 7 is really tight. In Geneva, there are sidewalks that range from 7 to 10 feet wide. So that's something that we might want to look at, requiring additional setback for new development to give more width at the sidewalk level. Crosswalks are pretty good. There's generally a crossing at these two corridors at each side street, and in the case of where there's signals, there's usually the two marked crosswalks. They could be higher visibility, but anyways, pedestrian facilities are pretty good. Sidewalk width, I think, is something to look at. And another thing to look at is amenities. So what about streetlights? What about curb ramps? And streetscape amenities such as benches and other things like that. So now I'm going to go to case studies. So we have an architect on our team, BAR Architects, and they have provided some case studies of projects that they've worked on that have some similarities to our two corridors and mainly relatively small parcel sizes and a busy, you know, active frontage. So this one is the Jefferson Condos in Redwood City. This one is 99 Roush Street in San Francisco, and then City Line in Seattle, Washington. So I'll just go back to Jefferson Condos is a project that has, it's a fairly tight site and has, I think, no parking associated with it. It's affordable housing, and it's fairly dense, but it gets really good housing, and it's a fairly attractive building in a setting of a pretty busy corridor. 99 Roush is an interesting project, because it has a larger frontage on the main corridor, which is Folsom, and it has a lower-density housing behind facing the cross street, which is Roush, which is a good strategy perhaps for Mission and Geneva, too. And then, oops, hold on. City Line is a lower project, it's three and four stories, and it's located in Seattle. But on a larger site, you can get more space, you get open space inside, you can have greater setbacks. But that's a larger parcel that's something like four acres. So our findings from looking at these case studies are that the smaller sites allow for type 3, the construction type is wood construction, which is common and the most cost-effective these days, over a concrete podium, up to six stories high. They're both about 100 units to the acre with zero or minimal setbacks, and these are also within distance of transit. So these are pretty good case studies, and I think they can illuminate our work. And one thing I want to mention about our project is that we will have BAR Architects look at two sites, one on each of Mission and Geneva, to do some development proposals, ideas, some kind of, you know, case study ideas for actual parcels in Daily City. We'll bring those back to you for review, and that'll be part of our determination of what our recommendations are for the zoning. There's some other findings about the larger sites of above one acres. Again, not as tall, not as dense in this case, and there are setbacks to allow for landscaping and so forth. There is parking provided on this project, which is about a little bit less than one per unit. So I think another thing we'll want to look at here is parking ratios and what is appropriate for Daily City. Okay, so that's mostly my presentation. I'll just say that when we do this work and analysis, and when we come back to you, we really are going to be considering these regulations in some depth. And that includes, what are the building heights, not only on the frontage street, but also relating to the residential behind? What are the minimum lot sizes, parking requirements? What should be happening at the ground floor street frontage along Mission and Geneva? And what is the relationship to the neighborhood? And what is the relationship to the, to the neighboring development? So those are things that we will be considering. And I'm happy to answer any questions or comments you might have now. I have a next step slide, but why don't we keep it here? And if you have any, any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
Yes, I think the Vice Mayor has something. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think that it's important work that you have at hand, realizing that there's a mismatch with our general plan, and the zoning is so important. The Mission corridor in Geneva, there's so much potential, and I think that the importance is having that community engagement with the local neighborhood business owners to really find the right fit around zoning, and also meeting the needs around affordable housing, housing in general. You know, Daly City is already dense, but, you know, there is opportunity. Given the fact that the last general plan cites it as an opportunity for housing, I think that, you know, I'd like to know how you envision the community engagement piece of it. I know that you, you said that there'd be meetings. Would that be in-person? Is it online? That's my first question. But overall, this is necessary for us as a city to evolve and ensure that we have, we optimize opportunity for housing.
Thank you for that question and that, those comments. We are having a meeting this Thursday. We sent out postcards to all property owners on both corridors. That will be a online meeting where people will come online. We are also planning a wider community meeting, which will happen later on in April, and we haven't determined exactly the, the way, the, the outreach methods, but we're likely to use multiple methods. So any recommendations you might have about how to attract community members to a meeting like that, we would love to hear.
Thank you, yeah. I think that the community engagement piece is always important, but like I said, I think that you provide some case studies around what potentially could happen around the Mission corridor and the Geneva corridor. And also wondering, as you do these case studies and rezone kind of the Mission and Geller area, how would our affordable housing piece, the BMR, our affordable housing, kind of BMR, fold into that, understanding that we're doing zoning changes? I want, I want to understand what that overlap may be, because I do feel like we need to maximize the opportunity to have more housing opportunities, especially around transit corridors such as the Mission area. We're so close to BART. If you're at the latter end of Mission, you're close to Colma. And then the Geneva corridor, of course, definitely the opportunity for more affordable housing. I mean, we are doing the over 500 units of rehabilitation and new housing over there in the Bay Shore, but ensuring that there's opportunities to enhance that corridor as well for those that live in the neighborhood already, and also potentially bring in businesses and small businesses. So it's really exciting. Okay, so I'm very excited to see this at the table because I think it's long overdue, and when I hear that there's actually a mismatch in that respect, I think that your timeline looks rigorous, but I think it needs to happen as soon as possible so, so that the opportunities that may come down the pipeline, potential, I see that you saw, that you, you showed a grouping of parcel around Bepler Street. I'm curious about that as well, when you mentioned that's obviously city-owned land. When you talked about that grouping, what is the potential in that respect?
There is potential because it's city-owned, and we'll, we'll be exploring that with staff further, but we are looking at that as maybe one of the sites that we'll be developing some idea, schematics for, to see what could fit there, what would be appropriate for that neighborhood. So I think we will be looking at that site, not determined yet, but love to hear from the council whether you think that's a good idea to look at that site, and, and that could be helpful to us, but so far, it's a top candidate to look at further. And you asked one other question about the affordable housing policy, Michael Wood. I think any project that did move forward would need to adhere to the current affordable housing policy in the city.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. And then one piece of it, obviously, we are very dense already. As we develop or you just match the zoning on Mission Street, I think one important piece is also understand just the safety of communities as we become more dense along those corridors. I think being able to understand how we make sure that the safety of more pedestrians in that area or transit users is also a factor we should look into.
So you're talking about traffic safety, collisions, and so forth?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Wright?
Thank you for the presentation. I think, I'll probably speak for myself, but I think this is a very exciting opportunity that we've been all looking for, for quite a while. I'm up on that Mission and Geneva corridor quite often, and, you know, there's a lot of residents that always ask me, like, what's going to happen here? Are we going to have a grocery store in the Bay, grocery store in the Bay Shore? Are we going to have this in the Bay Shore? What are we going to do on the Mission corridor? There's like all these empty business lots here, there's empty lots. So I'm glad that we're having a process to echoing Vice Mayor to engage the community, and I think that's, for me, I think that's one of the priorities, is engaging the community that has been there for many years, generations, but also to engage them in the process of, of buy-in, but also determining what can be potentially developed in these areas. I guess my question is, is like, what is preventing business, businesses from going into these places to begin with, based on your preliminary findings and studies?
From where? From going?
From like engaging and revitalizing these areas? I mean, does it take, does it need to have like a commercial mixed-use change, or?
Well, it, it does, you know, even though it's supported in the general plan, the zoning doesn't match, so it will, it will streamline development when the zoning is realigned.
Okay.
We also want to demonstrate support from the council and the community with the new standards that we developed, so that developers feel comfortable. Okay, this is, this is supported by the community and decision-makers, we can move forward with this, because right now, there's maybe some uncertainty there.
Gotcha.
So that could be holding some people back. I think just the process itself might attract interest on the, from the development community to the corridor, because they see that Daly City is doing this process and, you know, wanting to make the corridor better, and so that may in itself attract some interest, too. So I think there's multiple ways this could really attract new development.
Thank you.
I had a, I've had discussions about what to do on Mission Street for years with, with residents there, and one idea that has been proposed that sort of stuck in my mind, and I, I think you're the perfect person to ask, although I don't know if you can answer it, but the idea that maybe what needs to be done is that street needs, the traffic needs to be slowed down. Now that you're talking about even more residential, maybe if you, and again, this is coming from community members who talked about, number one, safety, because we've had accidents there, some fatal, but also if you slowed it down, would that benefit the community in terms of people wanting to go to that area, businesses wanting to open up, because you're going to have traffic that's going to go through there at a, maybe at a slower pace? They're going to be able to enjoy and see the location? And then the other issue that sometimes also comes up is, is it counterintuitive to think that we should account for some open space to attract more people? And so I don't want us to lose the idea that open space is the, it's the enemy, because I think in many ways, it could be an attraction and maybe even draw more people to that community if they see like a park or something that they want to use and they want to be a part of in, in the community. So I'm just, I'm interested.
Well, first of all, street speed, I think that's a great point, actually. I haven't noticed a lot of speeding, but anecdotally, there probably is speeding, especially at certain times of the day or night, and there is definitely a link between the, how comfortable people feel on a corridor, on foot, and the speed of the traffic that's next to it. And, and, you know, some of it is, is whether there's parked cars separating them, and there's other factors involved, but speed is one of those factors. And we find that when you revitalize a corridor, when you see a lot of pedestrian activity, that in itself will slow traffic down somewhat, because if, if you go further down Mission, where there, it gets tighter and there's more stores and activity, you'll see that the, the traffic doesn't go as quickly there. So, but there is a correlation between speed and, and health in the corridor. So I think that's something that we should look at, and we do have a, a traffic consultant on board, so we'll be, you know, that's a good suggestion, we'll be looking at that.
Great.
Not sure our project can really solve that problem, but we can make recommendations for maybe a follow-up study to look at, you know, ways to reconfigure. And then the other, the other question, sorry.
Open space.
Open space. So the sites are pretty small. If there were really large sites here, I think there's, there'd be great opportunity. Maybe at some point in the future, the Cow Palace turns into something else and redevelops. That would be a great location for some significant open space attached to development, but I think a lot of the parcels, we will be probably looking at more plazas as kind of open space rather than more active recreation, just because there isn't so much space on the parcels that we see. But we'll look into that, and we'll, we'll, I mean, I love recommendations, and we'll talk to community members about that, too, what is, what are the needs, you know?
Yeah.
And with you residents there, the needs are going to be even greater. So we want to be able to address open spaces as well.
Great, thank you. Mr. Giovanni, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for being here and familiar with Place Works, because you guys are the League of Cities and BAR has a great reputation. Yeah, when they were talking about open space, I know that we have a project, a mid and big project, 100% affordable on Mission, and at the very top, I was very impressed that they had a playground, so that families at that, they would have someplace to go and a safe space, and they made it very attractive. I'm not sure if you're familiar with it, but something that they have that at the top, and they, for the families that live there, and it's safe, it was guarded, had like, oh, for the, where the wind is, and then they had a little area, like where the adults can gather as well. So it's still open, it gives them a place to go with their children, and yet, you know, it's still in the 100% affordable in that thing, and I might, it might be amenable to grants, because currently, as you know, that childcare is on the forefront of a lot of grants and a big push in, I just attended the California League of Cities with Congresswoman Spear and, and Dave Pine, and them are pushing a council for trying to get more childcare. So maybe there's a way to put childcare and have some of these people to integrate it. I, I know probably not in all of them, but maybe some of the property owners would be more amenable to do that, and, and it seems to be a, a push to try to get a lot of monies, monies from the state for that, and like you said, you have to put all the pieces together and see what the needs are. And also the Bay Shore School, as you know where the location is, they're creating a, they're trying to create the walk to school. So when they do that, the school board members, you could probably meet with them, and then they have a great outreach to all the families, that you'll see them, and they have a good pulse on that community, along with, along with our Pacific Islanders together, who are engaged quite a bit in that community for their Santa Claus and what have you. And so they, and then our Bay Shore seniors, our Bay Shore seniors are actually pretty active, and they could probably bring in a lot of people for you as well, and I'll be happy to send you the information.
Thank you for, for all those comments. We're taking notes.
No, no, it's okay. It's just exciting, you know, I think that all of us feel that, you know, it's very passionate. We're at the beginning, we're just at the beginning, but just to see an idea of how vibrant, and we want to make it so it's quality of life, right? So quality of life seems to be getting minimalized, where everybody wants to get crowded on top of one another, and I think it's a responsibility not to put someone, like, any, the golden rule, treat someone like you're willing to be treated or what have you. Would you want to be put in a little box? So we have seen, like, for instance, we have senior housing, which is great, at the top, at the top of the hill. No parking, it's not full. Seniors for 55 and older. The 50, some of them I know, and they can't carry their groceries, you know, everywhere. So at least, and some of the projects, we can consider at least having one car, because I'm telling you, just putting transit only, especially for the seniors and families, it's been a tough, tough deal, even for them at top of the hill, to keep it safe, and they go apply and they can't have a car, they, the relatives can't come, the grandchildren, no one. So, you know, to keep, there's a lot of things to keep in mind, and architects are great at design, so a BAR is always great. So, but I appreciate it, look forward to working with everyone, and thank you for coming to Daly City.
Yeah, I just want to mention that, that your, your comment about the rooftop playground is, it sounds very innovative.
Yes.
I want to look into that. You know, we see a lot of projects that provide open space on top of podiums, so if the, you know, there's a parking podium or a retail, and then open space on top of that, and then apartments around it, but to do it on a rooftop is, is less common, so that's a great idea.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure that, so you could have like a tour, or look at it, I'm sure it's online, and then see how they designed it on that, and it's, it's used quite a bit by the families, and then they even have like the other area where they like, you know, they always have it in the San Francisco area more or less, where they have the open pit in case people want to rent out a commu-, a little room on the inside. But, yeah, it's, it's just something to say for, because for me, I don't think, I think about housing, but I want to think of it as quality of life. No matter what your income level is in the city, you deserve quality of life with you and your family, and I want them to feel welcome when they come home with the vibrant colors for the children, and know that they have a safe place for the kids and families as well and seniors. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Passionate.
Questions?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
No other questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Great presentation. All right, let's go on to approval of the minutes, I know number three. Are there any corrections to the February 13th meeting?
Motion.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any objection? Hearing none, those minutes are approved. Let's go on to approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any objection? Hearing none, the agenda is approved. Public appearances, oral communications. So speakers are limited to two minutes unless modified by the mayor. The council cannot take action on any matter raised under this item. I have one speaker card, her name is Laura Baldwin. Ms. Baldwin, come on up. Hi, good evening.
Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, and council members, my name is Laura Baldwin, I'm a lifelong resident proudly of Daly City. I was just thrilled to hear you, Ms. Giovanni, talking about treat others like you want to be treated, and you, Ms. Manolo, talking about safety, because that's what I'm here to address. The streetlights in the Westlake Division of the Olympic section have been out for three months. They were out last year for two months, and were finally fixed. This year, it is even worse, it has gone on much longer. I personally was almost hit by a car at 9:30 at night, crossing the street to get to my driveway, which is what's prompted my attention to this matter. My neighbor, four doors up, slipped off of her sidewalk getting into her car about three weeks ago, because she couldn't see it. It is so dark, we back up against the Olympic Club, there are no lights. It is so dark, we back up against the Olympic Club, there are no lights coming in from there, we back up against the course, and it has not been fixed. There has been no signage saying it was going to be fixed, and a lot of the neighbors have quote unquote given up. I hear comments, nobody cares, nobody cares about us, and I refuse to believe that, and that is why I am here. I have done outreach since last week to people on, not just this city council, I'm, I'm sorry, I have not received a response, but also to the city managers to find out what is going on. I was put in touch and CC'd on an email was PG&E, who said that they tried to fix it but couldn't get access. I have emails from another person in the city who told me a different story, so now I'm hearing two different stories. A lot of my neighbors were going to come tonight. I said that coming in here and screaming and hollering wasn't going to do anything, we need action, we need to be responsible, we need safety to come back into the, into the Olympic Section of Westlake. It is absolutely inexcusable that taxpaying homeowners are left in the dark.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. So, let me just thank you for coming and for speaking your piece. Again, the city council can't take any action, however, if you have a seat, I'm going to have Richard Chu speak as to what, what's been happening.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Yes, staff is aware of the streetlight outages in Daily City. Unfortunately, at this moment, we are waiting for PG&E to inspect their equipment. PG&E has indicated to us, this latest correspondence, that they are scheduled to come out at the end of this week to inspect their equipment. Daily City staff, we do not have the ability to work on PG&E equipment, we don't have the ability to inspect their equipment. In this particular case, it's our understanding that there's PG&E equipment in an underground vault. That underground vault is flooded with water, and it has flooded in the past. Typically, what PG&E does is they have pumps and they pump that vault out so that all the water is removed, and then they have the ability to access into the vault to inspect their equipment. They've indicated to us in the past that they were going to, to do the pumping, and my technicians have gone out there and it's still full of water. Unfortunately, I think the storms are not helping the situation as well. I think PG&E is responding to a lot of home power outages, and that is a higher priority to them as opposed to streetlights. We've had several discussions, and we've tried to escalate this with the help of city manager's office as well as city council members.
Yes.
In regards to discussing the situation with PG&E, with CPUC, we've also involved Assembly Member Phil Ting's office. So, we're doing everything we can. We continue to reach out to PG&E on a regular basis. We also maintain a list of residents that contact us and inquire about what's going on, and that if they would like to get additional updates, as we get additional information, we would call them and give them an update in terms of any new information that we would have. But at this moment, we are still awaiting PG&E crews to come out and inspect their equipment. Be happy to answer any other questions.
Good. So, do you have any idea when PG&E is going to be able to do this? Did they give you any sort of timetable?
The, the latest correspondence in which Ms. Baldwin was CC'd on was that they are scheduled to have crews out by the end of this week.
Okay.
So, that's kind of what we're waiting for.
And, and so, just to be clear, Daily City is not responsible for that? In, in other words, we, we can't do what PG&E is supposed to do?
That is correct. We do not have the ability to inspect PG&E equipment, to repair their equipment, we don't have that ability to, to do so. These series circuits, they're very high voltage, streetlight systems, and they're connected in series, which is like a Christmas light, so that when one goes out, they all go out. We've suggested to PG&E in the past to keep additional spare parts on hand, and they've indicated that they would. But again, this is something that we are continuing to work with PG&E to see if they can respond a little bit quicker. But again, as I mentioned, I think, you know, with the storms, that definitely isn't helping the situation as well.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chu.
Okay.
All right, that concludes the public appearance. I don't have any other, Ms. Pibbola, do we have any others? No, okay.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment?
Go ahead.
All right. Mr. Chu, thank you so much for your report, it's very much appreciated. I know we had a discussion regarding PG&E and the series connectors and trying to change over to parallel. Ms. Baldwin, thank you so much for coming before the city council. As I may have made mention, we cannot take action. However, I want to say, totally inexcusable. I try, I put myself in your shoes, if I was in your area, I would not tolerate that, especially for the length of time that it's been going on. We are now aware of the issue. I think what the city needs to do, even though we have limited capability, at least contact, send a letter to everyone out there and let them know what's going on. I, I, I think that would go a long way, but we cannot take action on that. But what I would like to say, perhaps in another meeting, we can agendize this matter and say, what are the updates? And maybe we can get the stakeholders involved who lived in that, lives in that area, and help us out, give us some ideas, what can we do, because our hands are tied. So, just my comments, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sylvester.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Our city trigger, we're allowed to communicate with the Mr. Chu on it, right? On the item without referring to the public comment, correct? Okay. So, Mr. Chu, just to let you know, that things that, as we all got settled in, and thankfully that we have a city manager who's been very responsive to the people as well, and that, you know, that, that we were, we were discussing that about the ROs and them having a thing, and that I would like to say that Mr. Chu has tried several attempts to contact PG&E and with no response, including the SPUC, as I was present at, at a meeting and with the district director of Phil Ting's office. And now I have recently, as of yesterday, been in touch with the current congressman where they were doing the infrastructure money. So, even though we can't push them as much, we can do our end, and it's a safety issue for our, and then it's their property, but there are things that we can try, but we can get other stakeholders such as our congressman and others, hopefully that will give them more of a nudge, as, so to speak. Because he's, he and our new city manager have been, since I've been on board with Mr. Piccolati, I've sent the information over and he's responded and given it to Mr. Chu immediately to communicate, in constant communication. So, and I do appreciate that, both of you. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Nope? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chu. Thank you, Ms. Baldwin. We have the consent agenda item next, or any other council members want to pull any items off the consent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I'd like to pull item number six, eight, and nine.
Six, eight, and nine. Anyone else?
Thank you.
All right, can I get a motion to approve the remaining items? That's four, five, seven, 10, and 11.
Motion to approve.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, those items are approved. Let's go back to number six, which is the accept proposed title changes of administrative secretary to executive administrative assistant and legal secretary to the executive legal office assistant.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, before we do that, are we supposed to, oh, the four and five is part of that, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you, Natalie.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council. Before you this evening is a resolution to approve proposed title changes to administrative secretary to executive administrative assistant and legal secretary to executive legal office assistant. To provide some background, administrative secretary and legal secretary are positions that serve at the pleasure of the city manager. The secretary title is an outdated title that is no longer in use throughout the city job specifications and comparable agencies. In order to better reflect a title that is consistent with industry standards and the duties of the position, the city manager is proposing the following changes to the job specifications. Number one, revise the administrative secretary title to executive administrative assistant. And number two, revise the legal secretary title to executive legal office assistant. The executive administrative assistant would continue to perform a wide variety of confidential clerical and administrative assignments for the city manager, staff, and/or the city council. The executive legal office assistant would continue to perform a wide variety of confidential clerical and administrative support to the city attorney's office. There is no fiscal impact to this item. Staff is requesting that the city council approve the proposed title change from administrative secretary to executive administrative assistant and approve the proposed title change from legal secretary to executive legal office assistant. And staff is available to provide any additional information desired by the mayor or council member.
Just a few questions.
Go ahead.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Mr. Piccolati and Ms. Sakal. Yeah, actually, the reason I have a few questions is, we just hired the administrative secretary and that we were notified welcoming the administrative secretary, which is great, you know, whatever, just basically a few days ago. So, how and when did it come up that there needed to be a title change prior to that? And were there any other candidates that applies, applied administrative secretary rather than the executive? So, for me, we just did a hiring process. If I, I'm a can, say I'm a candidate and I'm going to go for the administrative secretary, and I go, and maybe I don't get it or whatever, and then I look on this and I go, wait, I said, that's executive secretary and it's getting a title change, when other people in our city, our workers, you know, have been waiting for a title change for, I don't know, but I'm just, could you clarify, why is it that, and when did it first come up? Because we recently just got the email saying to welcome the administrative secretary, and now here we are, less than a week, and it says, I'm not saying that anything's nefarious or anything, I just want to give clarification, I was a little thrown off, that it's executive, less than a week, and it's an agency. To the people that applied for those jobs, if there was any other candidates, I think, it may be a little unfair to them that they applied as one thing, and now it's less than a week, and then it's something else. So, that's, and then is there any other, like, mid-year budgeting that would be accessible to have a salary increase with that, even though it's not a fiscal impact tonight? And is there any other job description that's different than the administrative secretary? Thank you.
I can try to address, through the chair?
Yes, go ahead.
I can try to address some of that.
Okay.
When we advertised the position, during that process, it became apparent that this was an outdated title, and we wanted to finish the process and then make the change. And it, and also, what also came up was where else did we have an outdated title, and that was the other legal secretary in the city attorney's office, so we made those changes post the process. But it, we, we wouldn't be able to change it until after the fact, so that, I hope that answers the first part.
Sort of, but wouldn't you have kept it open and then maybe changed the exec, to the executive, then people would have applied as the executive?
Possibly, but I, it's the same position with the same job requirements. It's just a new title.
I just, I don't know, I'm, I'm not comfortable with it just being changed after people, were there more than one candidate? I can at least ask that, yeah.
Yes, we went through a formal recruitment process.
Okay, yeah, so I'm not gonna, yeah, because I know I can't ask other stuff. But, but if there's more than one candidate that applied for administrative secretary, and then you're discovering as, as it goes through, that that title should be changed, is, I'm just thinking about the whole fairness of the whole thing, and then I think about all the other city workers and, and all that. Is that, is that, I don't know, I just, I don't know. I'm not comfortable with a title change, and is there ever going to be, because if it changed to executive, when would that come into play? When, if it was voted yes to be executive, when could that person use that title?
It would be following city council approval.
Oh, like tonight, right? Not prior?
No.
Okay, not prior. Okay. So, there's nowhere that that person, person you, or anyone would use executive secretary prior to tonight, till after the approval?
Correct.
Okay. And then, is there ever going to be a mid pin increase, like on our mid, I mean, mid pin, pardon me, in our budget? Like, would, are we going to see our budget come when it's adjusted for people's salary increases down the road? Maybe not fiscal impact tonight, but would there be one based on that title? An increase?
It's, it's the same salary range.
Same salary range? Okay. And shouldn't that say there in somewhere what the salary range is and that it will stay? And what other agencies was it compared to? As far as title change? Like, I just would like to see that provided.
Typically, we provide salary surveys if we're looking at changing the salary, and since this was a title change, we didn't provide specific title comparisons in other agencies, but there is no fiscal impact with changing the title for a position that serves at the pleasure of the city manager.
Somehow, I don't feel it's right to the people that applied for the job as administrative secretary. That's my, that's my thing. And then, then there's a title change, what, two days ago, there was the discussion about the title change? Because we received an email, which was welcoming, I don't know the date, but I believe it was four or five days ago, or if not then, and, which is great to have a welcoming, the new administrative secretary as the administrative secretary. And then it's less than a week, and I see on the agenda that usually things don't get so, that it's being changed. I don't know if anybody can follow me on this, but I just feel uncomfortable about that, to the people that, anybody else that has applied or what have you, I don't know. So, I get the assistant legal secretary to the executive, but you guys tied it together, executive legal office assistant, that also is due to industry standards?
Correct.
Right? It would have been nice to have the industry, like, standards to show us, like, attachment to it, to see that. But, I don't know, I just, I feel like it's a little, it's not meant to be, because I know, I know you're not doing that. I just, I feel as a city, I feel this, that, that we're not, we kind of like deceive the per, the candidates that applied for administrative secretary, and now they're going, the person's going to get a, a title change already, which...
Through the chair? Yes.
There was no intent whatsoever to deceive anyone.
Oh, I'm not saying that there is.
No, you just said that, with all due respect, I just want you to know.
Answer the question.
I want everyone to know, there was no intent to deceive anyone.
Of course.
We went through the process, it was a fair process, someone was promoted, we realized along the way that those titles probably don't apply in this day and age, so we thought, we worked with the city attorney and the human resources director, and we found appropriate titles. And that, that's the process now.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm, yeah, but what I'm saying is, it wouldn't have been better to do it during the, the, maybe the interviews, and then just tell them, I'm sorry that, you know, maybe we could do a title change and then continue the interviews. That's all. Okay, thank you.
That could be possible, council member.
Yeah, that, that, that's what I mean. I would definitely know, I understand that, that this was probably just discovered, like you said, during that, that time. Okay? And then it, it won't be used until after tonight. Okay? And I see how they're tied together, so not feeling, I just, we have to think of mine of like, the, even though there's nothing done wrong in any capacity, we also have to, for me, we are a city, and that, that, a public place, and then perception is huge in our industry, I mean, in our services to the public, and whatever the public, and for whomever other people were. But, okay, thank you. Thank you, Natalie. Thank you, Mr. Piccolati.
Any comments or questions?
If I may, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Director Sakal, for the explanation. I think that what is at hand for moving the term secretary to exec, executive administrative assistant, I think the term secretary is archaic, and I think that it, it seems fitting that it's on the consent agenda to be able to... that it's on the consent agenda to be able to move this forward. So thank you very much.
All right, any other questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, Council DJ Avani is a little bit maybe confused, but thank you for bringing this matter up. Perception is a big deal as to how folks may perceive as to what may be internally happening or might be an agenda. But based upon the information I've read from the staff report and the comments from our city manager, that it was a, it was a complete open transparency process in which there was more than one candidate, number one, and there is no fiscal impact, number two. And to ask if it's going to be a fiscal impact later, I think that is not the question here, because no one knows at this time, there is no fiscal impact. And as the vice mayor alluded to, she used the term archaic, and I want to use the term legacy. This is the old legacy title, and I think by the city coming up with a title that is more applicable as to the job duties that someone is doing, other than just secretary, I think the title is well-meant. So with that being said, I make a motion that we approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say a, oh, no, there's going to be probably a no vote, so let's take a roll call, please.
Ms. DJ Avani?
I abstain.
Dr. Rod?
Yes.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Glenn Sylvester, aye.
Mr. Buenaventura?
Aye.
All right, that item passes. Let's go to item number eight, which is accept of Board of State and Community Corrections Officer Wellness and Mental Health Grant Funds for Officer Wellness and Mental Health Resources. Acting Chief Kristensen, go ahead.
May I, mayor, vice mayor, and council members, before you this evening, is a request to consider the acceptance and appropriation of the California Board of State Community Corrections Grant Funding for Officer Wellness and Mental Health. This grant was a portion of the 2022 Budget Act passed by the governor, and it allotted $50 million to 394 law enforcement agencies throughout the state of California for the purposes of establishing or expanding officer wellness units, establishing or expanding peer support units, services provided by a licensed mental health professional, counselor, or other professional that works with law enforcement, expanding multi-agency mutual aid programs focused on officer wellness and mental health, and other programs and services that are evidence-based or have a successful track record of enhancing officer wellness. Officer wellness has become a topic of conversation over the more recent years, as there's a general understanding and agreement that officers in a physically and mentally healthy state will provide better service to the community they serve. The individual grant amounts were determined by agency's sworn size, and Daly City Police Department's portion of the grant was $63,889.52. The police department just implemented a peer support team and program within the last two months, and our first intended use for the grant funds will be to purchase an officer wellness application, which will be available to all members of the department, immediate family members, and retired members. This application provides information and self-help resources, direct access to peer support team members, self-guided mental and physical wellness surveys, as well as direct access to identified professionals who specialize in officer counseling within the greater Bay Area. In closing, staff is requesting the acceptance of the $63,889.52 in Board of State and Community Corrections Officer Wellness and Mental Health Grant Funds. Thank you, and staff is available for any questions if you have.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. DJ Avani?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to say that it's exciting that we can continue the mental health, and for you to get the monies as a grant. I want to thank you for that, because, and then hopefully we can move forward at some point and have another one, because I know that, that at least having two would be better than being overworked just with having one in our community, and to thank all the officers that are working with and for the mental health part, and that has been beneficial, from what I understand, in our community, so being integrated. So I know that we need the monies, and the fact that you went forward and did this, I really appreciate it, and for the community. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Go ahead, Ms. Vice Mayor.
Thank you for that presentation. I think that it's so important for wellness, especially for our officers that are on the ground. When you say application, is it an app on the phone?
It is a phone app, yes, it's through, I'm sorry, it's Cortico through Lexipol, who is our policy provider. So it's, it's a law enforcement-specific application. There's several agencies in the county, I know Colma's one that recently started, South City's also one, Redwood City's looking into it. But it is an application that provides just resources and different surveys that officers can take to see if they're stressed, or things of that nature, and it provides specific solutions that they can either do self-help and/or direct resources.
I think that's great that it's technologically advanced and that there's access to it right on hand, whether it's on the phone, and it's not only for the officers, but also for their families. So I think wellness and mental health is always important. I always say this, I mean, not only, I think our, our society, if we were to put an institute having not only like physical doctors, but literally having mental health doctors along the way, the same way you check in with your physical doctor, I think our society would be much more different, and a holistic approach to that is something that's needed. And so seeing this incorporated is wonderful, and that you got grant, grants for it. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
Acting Chief, thank you so much for your presentation. May I ask, on your peer support unit, how many does it consist of? How many officers?
Yeah, I believe we have, and I hope I'm going to get this right, but we have two supervisors that oversee the unit, they're seen, the unit itself is overseen by a lieutenant, just to ensure, and then I think we have six police officers that applied for a position and tested to become peer support members.
All right. Well, I used to be a peer support officer as well, and I wanted to offer, first of all, I think you've answered the question about having from different ranks. I think that's very, very important, because if a lieutenant is having problems, he or she would not want to go to an officer and speak about those problems. They would probably want somebody of their same peer. So I think that's an excellent idea. Also, for the public at large to know that, you know, generally as a police officer, you have this certain syndrome that you don't feel anything. And part of peer support is when an officer speaks to his or her peer, and that peer would say, it's okay, it's okay to cry, it's okay. Sometimes officers need, need that, so I think that's very important. Another important aspect of the peer support program is if there's anything that may endanger the lives of someone, or something like a crime may be committed or may have happened, all stops are out, that has to be reported. So I think the public needs to know, there is no quote as a thin blue line and we don't say anything, no. It has to be reported. So for the public to know that, rest assured, nothing is kept under wraps. I think this is a great deal, something that has been needed for a long time. A lot of resources where you try to look for family psychologists and whatnot, and you try to refer them to your medical plan that you, which you do get some services through your medical plan as well, but to have someone specific for the law enforcement aspect, because this, it could be domestic violence as well, and it happens in every profession and every culture. So I think this is a step in the right direction. I'm glad we're able to get these funds, and I'm sure you'll put them to adequate and good use for our law enforcement officers. Thank you. My comments.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions or comments?
I make a motion that we approve.
Second?
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Objection? Hearing none, that item is approved. Moving on to item number nine, accept $450,000 in one Bay Area grant to funds authorized the city manager to execute the program supplement for the South Gate Avenue and School Street Safety Improvement Project. Mr. Chu?
Yes, thank you. Good evening. This item is the acceptance of grant money for the South Gate Ave. and School Street Safety Improvement Project. So in November of 2021, the city council authorized staff to submit an application for the OPEC II grant funds for the South Gate Ave. and School Street Safety Improvement Project. Later that year, the MTC approved Daly City's project for OPEC II funding in the full amount requested of $450,000. The grant fund did require local match for the project. In June of 2022, we did appropriate the grant funds as well as the matching funds when we adopted the comprehensive operating and capital budget for fiscal year 2023. The next step now is to secure the OPEC II grant funds, and the city needs to execute a program supplement to the administering agency slash state agreement. The project would install edge lines, painted bowbouts, and high-visibility crosswalks to increase pedestrian visibility along the two corridors. These two corridors are identified in the city's high-injury network when we developed the Vision Zero Action Plan. The total cost of the project is currently estimated at $569,000. That includes design, construction, and construction engineering. And as I mentioned earlier, in June of 2022, the council did appropriate the $450,000 in OPEC grant funds and the $119,000 in Measure A funds. No additional appropriation is needed at this time. So in summary, staff is recommending that the city council accept the $450,000 in OPEC II funds from Caltrans, and then authorize the city manager or his trustee to execute the program supplement and other documents necessary for grant fund reimbursements for this project. This concludes the presentation, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chu, Ms. DJ Avani, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, Ms. Chu, another great example of grants. I mean, the people, so the people know in residence of Daly City, that these city workers, during the day, they're working hard in between the storms and everything else, and then they also are looking for grants and monies and funding so that it won't have to come out of your pockets. So I don't, I, speaking of rain and emergencies, and I thank the city manager for executing this, to make sure that they have pedestrian safety and the Vision Zero that continues, we were the first city to adopt the Vision Zero proudly, and it still continues for safety on the mine and the engineers. Please thank them and all the workers, because it's really ahead of the thing, especially here for pedestrian safety. So appreciate that. And hopefully that project, when it'll be completed?
Um, uh...
If we can, oh, wow.
Yeah, we're, we're probably be looking at, probably a year and a half with design and construction.
Remember Father Leonard's on South Gate? So thank you very much, and I, Jerry, this is closed. But thank you very much, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions or comments? Go ahead, Mr. Sylvester.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chu, and I guess Councilmember DJ Avani beat me to the punch, because I wanted to acknowledge Father Leonard Oaks. I believe your location is on South Gate, and I'm just wondering if any of the stakeholders have been reached out to, to let them know what's about to happen, or if there's any additional construction that may assist? Is that part of this grant as well?
The, the first step is to do some more design work, so that we have a better idea in terms of the actual type of improvements. Once we have some preliminary sketches, then we have a better ability to do a little bit more outreach and have something to show.
Oh, that, well, that's great. So it shows the openness, and, uh, Father, if we can stay in contact, because I'm sure you may have some good ideas based upon your parishioners that's coming in, and, you know, they may have said in the past, well, I almost tripped on that curb, can we fix that a little bit? And, you know, things like that. All right, that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
Speaking of public works, and it just sounds like it's hailing out there, and our wastewater and city managers.
Can I get a motion to accept?
Urgency motion. Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Objection? Hearing none, that item also passes. All right, thank you, Mr. Chu. Let's go to item number 12, consider the partnership with the San Francisco Host Lions Club Districtwide Strides for Diabetes Awareness Walk at Geller Park. Ms. Rom.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. The San Francisco Host Lions Club is inviting the city to partner for its district-wide Strides for Diabetes Awareness Walk on Saturday, April 22nd, at the Geller Park Picnic Shelters. As a partner, the city would host the event at Geller Park and promote the event to the Daly City community, so on our website and social media channels. The walk is being organized by all of the Lions Clubs in Region One in San Francisco, and supported by all Lions Clubs from San Francisco to Redwood City, including Daly City Host Lions Club. The walk will take place around the perimeter track of Geller Park to highlight the importance of physical activity and managing diabetes. Low blood sugar emergency action plan kits, which will contain glucose tablets, crackers, and detailed instructions on what to do when one has severe low blood sugar, will be provided to all participants. There will also be medical professionals on site to conduct blood sugar screenings. The council may consider becoming an official event partner and waive the $250 rental fee of the Geller Park Picnic Shelter for use from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Insurance waivers are no longer needed, as the Lions Club has already added the city as an additional insured under their own policy. Staff recommends that the city council provide direction to staff on event partnership and fee waivers. Staff is available to provide any additional information desired by the mayor, vice mayor, and council members, and we also have members from our Lions Club, including Reverend Leonard Oaks.
Great, thank you, Ms. Rom. Mr. Oaks, Reverend Oaks, you want to come up and say a few words?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. On behalf of the, all the Lions and Peninsula and San Francisco, the District 4C4, our district governor, John Huey, and I have with us, we have with us the region chair of, of Region One Lion Sharon Evanhart, and online on YouTube right now is Lion August Valera, a co-zone one on this Region One. Would like to thank you. Thank you for participating and getting into partnership with the Lions in delivering services to our constituents, our brothers and sisters in the community. We have both a common motto, which is, we serve, and that's the Lions Club motto, and our partnership will indeed deliver services to our diverse members of the community, and it will go a long way. We have a common responsibility to provide access and resources to our people who are suffering from diabetes and hypertension. Daly City is the home of very diverse and rich in culture that happen to love rice, potato, and pastry in their daily kitchen table. And with your leadership and our common leadership together, the participation of your different departments, the school, and our local health partners will indeed deliver that resources that our members in the community need. So let us all be present on April 22, and I invite you all on April 22, between the hours of 10 until 3:00 in the afternoon, I believe, to bring awareness to Strides for Diabetes Awareness Walk. Join us in walking the talk, and I thank you all for your partnership.
Do you have some comments? Dr. Rod, go ahead.
Um, thank you, Father Oaks, for putting this together. As a person that has battling this chronic illness for half my life, and having my mom and many of my family members battling this chronic illness, it's, it's really important to find ways of collectiveness and to do, and to refer, to ref, I guess, re-articulate what exercise is. That's always kind of like the word, it's like, I don't want to exercise, but if we want to do a walk together, if we want to do Zumba together, it's one way that we can get active together and find ways that we can address the situation of diabetes in all of our communities. and find ways that we can address the situation of diabetes in all of our communities because folks are becoming diabetic at a way more younger age, and it's due to, like, stress and, you know, our sedentary lifestyle. And this is just one way and one step to the larger goal of hopefully getting more people active and, you know, being able to do things in community. So thank you, Father Oaks.
Ms. Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Echoing Councilmember Dos Magwal around the importance of having education and bringing community together around diabetes is so important, especially in this region and area. And as he mentioned, there is more folks younger getting diagnosed. I got borderline. And I mean, and it's really important to catch it in the beginning and make sure that, you know, there's healthy lifestyles intergenerationally. And being able to bring a walk, to bring people together, to educate is so important, and also doing something fun, right? Doing something fun collectively at Geller Park, I think, is wonderful because you'll bring in education, you'll bring in community, and I, and health is so important nowadays. And it's wonderful that it's like a family event. So, you know, I look forward to partner, partner. I do have a question for Menam City Attorney. Can I vote on this if I'm a lion?
Yes, you can.
Okay, I just want to make sure. So, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So, I know it's going to be a great event, and then people, please bring all your family members. And I think that Dr. Rod will be out there telling his students the importance of it as well. I'm sure we're all promoted. And you're right. And when you have community together, maybe will there be someone to tell people that the bad word, or this dietitian is not a bad word, but to let them know there's substitutions for some of the foods, right? And then some things are hereditary, and we know it. But, you know, like, you can have your cultural foods, but you don't need them, like, all the time. And then, as someone told me, and I believe it was Vinnie Acevedo, they have that, what noodle was that we were speaking of? It's supposed to be healthy. And it's made out of a leaf, a leafy vegetable, correct, Father Leonard? What's the name of that?
Malongay.
Yes. So maybe we can all switch to that, which I know some people are growing in their yard in Daly City, and have a little tasting and something, something like that. We don't know. But, and from what I understand, it's one of the most, highly has the most nutrients, as you explained before. So looking forward to it, and Geller Park, and we're good with the district. And thank you, Ms. Sharon, for being here. And I'm sure we all look forward to, they were saying if you get up out of your chair multiple times each week, it doesn't necessarily count for exercise, but just to keep people moving, right? And then we can tell people, those who have mobility issues, right? Show them a way that they can, they can also counter the diabetes, because the side effects of the diabetes is what really gets people, I believe, you know, from the heart attacks and the strokes and the blindness and amputations and things that we don't want people to suffer. So thank you, looking forward to it, and I'd like to make a motion to approve this.
First, ask if there are any other comments. Any other comments? Okay. All right, you have, we have a motion in a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Can I get a roll call, please?
Ms. Dijavani?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Point of clarification, I think there was a direction and partnership. So if I may do a friendly amendment, because there was no direction on, on there specifically around us partnering. And so if I may add a friendly amendment for the record, that us as a city council will partner with the Lions to amend the designated fees.
Do you accept that amendment, Ms. Dijavani?
Yes, I do. And it already says, "Consider partnership with the San Francisco Host Lions" with the attachment, but that's fine.
All right. All right. Can we get a roll call, please?
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Glenn Sylvester, aye.
Mr. Buenaventura?
Aye.
Thank you, Father Leonard. Are you still playing your music?
I'm still doing that. But thank you, Mayor, and all the members of the council. I do hope that this is just the beginning of our partnership, and for future partnership we will have. I'd like to thank the city manager and the, Len Hany Ramos, for stepping up for us on our behalf. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Moving on to item number 13, which is Board Commission Membership Committee Appointments. The appoint, item 13 is appoint Director of the Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency and the Regional Finance Authority. Ms. Rom.
Good evening again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. The city is in receipt of a letter from the Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency, also known as BASCA, advising that the four-year term of Vice Mayor Manalo on the Board of Directors for both BASCA and the Regional Finance Authority will end on June 30, 2023. As we have background, Vice Mayor Manalo was named to both boards on February 11, 2019. The city council may reappoint Vice Mayor Manalo or appoint a new director for a four-year term that will end on June 30, 2027.
Thank you, Ms. Romas. At this time, I'm making a motion to reappoint Vice Mayor Manalo.
Put an order, the discussion.
Yeah, wait, we'll see if there's a second, then we'll have discussion.
Oh, okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, now we have discussion.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. So thank you, Liloni. So I just wanted to point out to the public that it does say, albeit it's good to have continuity, and then for Ms. Manalo has already served on it for over four years already. And I do think that that is important. But it does say in here, so for the public, that we do have the option of appointing someone in the public, right? It says in here, in the report that I read. And so how does someone of the public apply for this if they were interested in it, and if they do indeed have policy, albeit the continuity is important for these, both of these boards, and the background knowledge that Ms. Manalo has gained through the, her service. But I'm just curious that we never opened it up to the public, I mean, just as due process.
I'll defer to the city attorney.
Yeah, just as due process. How would one reply?
Well, my understanding is it's, it's just open. We don't have a process, and that's...
But how would they be notified if the public never knew, that they never knew that they could apply?
They can apply for anything is true.
But I mean, how would they, I'm just saying, they were never, like, I just received this, and I didn't know that a public member could apply. And that's, that's what all I'm asking.
Well, we don't have a process that publishes this as a notice. So because it's on the agenda, that would be the only way they would know. So there is no requirement for us to publish this as a notice, because it's not a commission or a board or anything of that nature. It's just that BASCA does allow for members of the public, so it would be up to the council, but we don't publish it.
Right.
It would be appointment of the city council as a new director.
Sure.
Through the chair?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, there's 26 agencies that make up BASCA, and it's an anomaly that it isn't an actual council member or director of a special district. So I just wanted to, it would be rare, but it's possible. But I think, just in my experience, Councilmember Manalo has been a leader on BASCA, and her service is valued, so I would definitely...
Definitely not questioning that. I'm just, I'm just questioning the part of, how would someone know, like, even if there's another board coming forward? So we are not required, I know, to post it, but it would be nice if anything is open to the public, just that it was a matter of due process, albeit, again, it's good to have continuity with the, the service of the first four years, and indeed if she chooses to and accept the, you know, going forward, right? And it does come with a stipend. Does this come with a stipend? Yeah, or anybody?
Through the chair. Can I answer that?
Go ahead, please.
Okay. Yeah, BASCA pays each board member, I believe it's $100 per meeting.
Yeah. I mean, not that that's even an issue. I'm just saying to open it to the public so that they would have an opportunity. There are people in our, our, our community that have policy experience, but albeit that we're already here, and that, but going forward, if there's an opportunity, that we should advertise it to the public. And, but this board, I'm sure, is mostly elected as well.
If, if I may, through the chair?
Yes.
That agenda is posted on my, actually on the wall outside, so people can flip through it.
Sure. I understand that. But how many people come in here? Yes. Correct. You get where I'm going with that? Just, I'm just trying to say, due process for the public, that's all. Yeah.
All right. Any other, sure. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. We have a motion in a second. Can we get a roll call, please?
Ms. Dijavani?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Glenn Sylvester, aye.
Mr. Buenaventura?
Aye. That matter passes. Let me, are there any other Board Commission?
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Yeah. I just want to thank the city council for giving me the opportunity to serve on the Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency for another term. It has been a really wonderful experience to learn about the water supply for the city of Daly City and the region. And it's an advocacy organization to ensure, for those of you in public, that when our water rates, especially around the supply and water rates, that we are given a fair chance. At historically, one point, there was a monopoly in San Francisco publicly, public utilities. And so it's really an agency to ensure that there is fair rates all across the region. And I'm proud to serve and as an advocate for our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Manalo. Okay. Are there any other Board and Commission Appointments? Hearing none. Let's go on to item number 14, which is Council Committee Reports. Any Council Committee Reports? Hearing none. Let's go on to item number 15, which is City Council Reports. Any City Council Reports? Go ahead, Ms. Manalo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you to the recreation staff for such a wonderful event right here at City Hall for Black History Month. It was an amazing film that really highlighted what Harlem was like many years ago with an amazing chela. Thank you so much for bringing that film forward. It was just a wonderful time in community. And I want to say thank you to the staff that really did an outstanding job to bring community together. Opel made amazing food that, that was of that era. But what was really beautiful about the event, for Black History Month, was there was a young woman that was here named Destiny that asked the most profound questions. And I think that is really what we, why we have these events, to have these events intergenerationally from young to old, and to honor our local heroes in the, in the black community. And that, it was, it was just well done, as, as usual. And so I wanted to thank the, thank the staff for that. And then also wanted to share that I attended an event with the Jewish Community Relations Council, JCRC. It was an event called Here I Am San Mateo, Communities United Against Anti-Semitism. And there, we had Congressman Kevin Mullin, we had Assembly Member Mark Berman, Mayor John Frumman from Foster City, Mayor Lee from San Mateo, and Mayor Julia Mates from Belmont, and we, from the Peninsula Multi-Faith Coalition, Reverend Christie Denham and Reverend Cronin. It was really beautiful as well. The young people spoke from the Ronald C. Warnick Jewish Day School. They are the leaders of our future, Alan Goldberg and Ruby Berg, our student council co-presidents. And hearing them really speak about their experience was beautiful, and that we will continue to stand united against hate in all forms. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Manalo. Any other City Council Reports? Go ahead, Ms. Dijavani.
All right, thank you. I just want to say that, it sounds like an echo, but that, I still feel that thing about that movie, it transcended. I don't know how, I'm sure you guys feel the same way. It really transcends the documentary and shows that music is the resilience of the people through all of it. Because when Leslie was asking the questions with the Q and A, and we all had to, you know, we participated because it was like, how does that feel? Like, what did you get out of it? What, what song? What did, what did you get? And there was so much that came out of that, that night, that we can take forward, not just for Black History Month, but every single day. And to remember the, all those that contributed and had to fight for freedom, and what it really means, and what it really means to all of us. And, Shala, I know that she gave you, we found out, I know you don't like to be touted out, that you chose, helped choose the film, and I could see why. Because it's, even the people that were here from East Palo Alto, and with the wonderful, not just the wonderful food, but it was a reflection of, of the community back then and the era of which that, that, and the way that Leslie presented it. So I really appreciate that. Secondly, on, unfortunately, when I couldn't go to the anti-Semitism in Foster City, but I wanted to let people know, there'll be an upcoming event that'll be more closer to on anti-Semitism, and it'll bring forth a lot of the light of the Holocaust that people are still in denial about. And it will probably be with people that are survivors. So hopefully, going forward, and I don't know that, they'll probably be in touch with recreation and city manager partner with the city. Maybe we could have it here in our own chambers. Because it's one thing to go and attend something, but it's another one to take the actions every day and be that person that has experienced it and has really, really fought against it. So there's a lot of us that, that have experienced those type of things, and how to stop it, when to recognize it, how we handle it, and moving forward with all that. But I appreciate that. And then, I just wanted to say that I know we're excited, we're looking for opportunities for economic development. And I was at the Airport Land Use Committee approving a project. And I found it interesting that some cities are looking into getting life sciences within their own downtowns and in different areas that you might not think life sciences would be availed to. So with our great Ms. Mother's Head, no pressure there, and Michael and everyone else, great opportunities for life sciences and biotech and economics. It seems to be, even in the corridors of opportunity, that the gentleman here was tonight with Place Works, they're actually integrating them, and we approved a project where life sciences in one of the cities is going to have it near even residential, the type of life sciences. And it'll be a great economic opportunity. So, and that we could put childcare as well. Thank you very much, and thank you for everybody. Thank you.
All right. Any other City Council? Go ahead, Ms. Manalo.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I forgot two other events I wanted to mention. As we honored our poet laureate, Jorge Guetta, at the last event at the library, we had Supervisor David Canapa present, as, as well as Council General Anna from El Salvador at the event. Also attended an event Supervisor David Canapa had in South San Francisco around mental health. I think that it was really important to bring forth the speakers that came from the Filipino Mental Health Initiative, and then also from the San Mateo Behavioral Department that spoke around access to resources around mental health, how important it is to ensure that whenever there is any forms of violence, whether it's in the home, the workplace, or in any situation, that you have access to resources. And so I want to thank Supervisor Canapa for bringing that forth. They will also be providing mental health aid kind of training. They have now a youth mental health training so that it can equip, like, very similar to... so that it can equip, like very similar to our physical, mental, I mean, physical first aid. Seeing the signs in young people is so important. And so they're providing that training with the city, with the county of San Mateo, and wanted to share that information, and it's an ongoing training. So if there's anyone out there that wants to learn, it's free of charge, and then maybe we can put that on our website. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Manalo. Any other City Council Reports? No? How about staff report?
No, sir.
All right. We're at the point of the adjournment. I didn't actually get an adjournment document, but I'd like to, for us to adjourn in memory of Mario R. Duarte, who was the father of Commissioner Nancy Rodriguez, who's in the, on the Arts and Culture Commission. We send our condolences and wish her well and to her entire family. Any other adjourned memories? If not, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.